Okay, we're good to go, Commissioner.
Hi, hello, I am Ellen Wang, Chair of the Senior Citizens Commission, and I'm calling to order the March 14th, 2022 meeting of the Senior Citizens Commission of the City of San Mateo. And the first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. And we will see a flag, I believe, on the screen.
Yes.
Tell me when. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Lilly, will you please read or do the roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Foreman?
Here.
Commissioner Webb?
Here.
Chair Wang?
Here.
Vice Chair Lee?
Yeah.
All are present. Thank you.
Thank you. "Due to the physical distancing protocols in place at this time, we continue to encourage public participation remotely. Information on how to provide public comment is explained at the top and bottom of the published agenda. There are two ways to participate. Join the Zoom meeting by clicking on the link at the top of the agenda, and you may use the Raise Your Hand button to be called on at the appropriate time, if you are during public comment time. Please turn off your video and unmute yourself only when called upon. Phone-in participation can be done by calling 408-638-0968, and this is written on the agenda also. And then you would enter ID number 87516847364, It's written on the agenda. These options for public comments, that is, will remain available until I close the public comment period for that specific item. And these options are that you raise your hand and you're called upon, or on the phone, you press asterisk nine to raise your hand to be called on, and asterisk six to unmute yourself when called on." The next item, Bob, did you have an announcement or something now or later?
No, I'll do it during the staff reported version.
Okay. The next item is if there's any consent calendar items. Oh, the thing here is the approval of the minutes.
Chair Wang, I had one comment on the minutes.
Good, go ahead.
In the last meeting, one of the discussion items was the recommendation of options for eliminating the need for a waiting list for the meals, and I did not see that included as part of the notes.
Where do you mean?
In the document of the meetings, the notes from the last meeting.
In the minutes?
Yes, in the minutes.
Under?
What I'm saying is it was not included.
But where would, is it under the seniors' winter recreation programs? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes, it would have been included under the old business section under the recreation programs.
Who was the one that reported on this? And do we have any discussion, any further comments about that?
Commissioner Wang, so I do remember that, and I believe we will talk to that during, we'll be talking about the senior lunch program during our report today, which is Agenda Item Four.
Okay, isn't that?
You can make a motion to add that to the minutes.
I make a motion to add that to the minutes of the last meeting.
And what exactly, what do you want to write down here? Do you have the words that you'd like to say?
The words would be that a request was made by Commissioner Foreman to have staff prepare a recommendation for how to eliminate the need for a meal waiting list.
Request by Commissioner Foreman for staff to, say that again?
Prepare a recommendation for how to eliminate the need for a waiting list on meals.
To eliminate need for waiting lists for meals?
Correct.
Request by Liz Foreman, Commissioner, for staff to prepare recommendation to how to eliminate need for waiting list for meals at the meals at the center. Okay. Do you think, okay, do you think, now that I've realized what you wanted to say, do you think that the comment, "Commissioners asked questions of staff and provided comment regarding the Get Around Program comma, the Senior Center Grab and Go Lunch Program, and the Senior Center Program participation numbers, is sufficient to cover what your comment was?"
No, because that had to do with, that was a different item, that that was a request to have an understanding of the participation rate by program over the last 12 months, and that was entirely separate item than understanding how to enhance the user experience by eliminating the waiting list for meals. So yes, it's a different topic.
Okay. Okay, and I actually, anybody else? Because I had noted something myself, which is kind of crazy, but last, at the last meeting during the approval of the minutes, we had discussed, of the prior meeting, so at the January meeting discussing the minutes for the November meeting, I had noted that during the announcement period, I had said something slightly different than what was in the announcements. And so I believe when we passed the approval of zero to one, meaning we all approved during the motion, that it wasn't amended, that it was approved, it was approved as amended. And subsequently, actually just a couple days ago, or actually yesterday, the minutes were amended and put in the, as a public document now. But the approval of the minutes, it didn't state that they were amended. So, and I believe that they should be stated that way, that they were, the motion passed as amended. Same as today, I believe we should do that for what you're saying. Are there any comments on that? It's a bit confusing, that's for sure, when you amend an amendment. Okay, then, I would like to approve the minutes for January 10th stating as amended, and the amendments being that the minutes, thank goodness, the the minutes for January, on January 10th approved the minutes for November the 8th, the amended minutes for November the 8th. And secondly, we'll add in the the January 8th minutes will be amended to say in the seniors', under Seniors' Winter Recreation Programs update, request by Liz Foreman, Chair, Commissioner, for the staff to prepare a recommendation to how to eliminate the need for a waitlist for meals at the center in order to enhance the user experience. Are there any more amendments to the minutes? Okay, so great, let's approve those minutes, I hope.
I move to approve them, as amended, amended.
Thanks, so who just spoke?
Monica.
Oh, Monica, great, okay. Well, first of all, Lilly can do the roll call to take the vote on the approval of the minutes of January 10th as amended. Lilly?
We do need someone to second it.
Oh, seconded, thank you, any second.
Seconded.
Okay. Commissioner Lee?
I agree.
Commissioner Foreman?
I agree.
Commissioner Webb?
I agree.
Commissioner Wang?
I agree, thank you.
Motion's passed, thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Next is public comments. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the commission at this time. State law prevents a commission from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. Public comment is limited to a total of 15 minutes. However, an opportunity for additional public comment may be provided later in the agenda. Are there any, is there anybody from the public here, and do they wish to speak?
We have three members of the public, but no one has their hands raised. Chair Wang?
Okay, thank you. And I thank all of you for coming, and the three people in the public for coming and supporting whatever we have out here for the seniors of San Mateo. No comments at this time, okay. Old business. Old business today, the first up is Age Friendly Action Plan Update. And our speaker will be Bob Palacio.
Good evening, Chair Wang and Commissioners. Bob Palacio, Community Services Manager. So I'm going to give you, I'm going to share my screen here. I'm going to give you a quick overview of the latest iteration of the Age Friendly Action Plan. We have made a few changes and some additions to the plan, and I'm going to go through it, and I'll give you sort of an idea of how close we are to being finished and what the plan is for completion. Let me know when you can see that, everyone see that?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so one of the things that we're going to need to do is we recently met with folks in the city manager's office, and we discussed a little bit about what the color palette should be, and obviously this color palette is actually off from what the city's colors are. We actually now have an adopted color palette for all of our city presentations and documents and things of that nature. So we're going to form this document to that, so that'll be one of the main things. We were also able to add a lot of pictures from our programs as opposed to some of the stock canvas photos that were used previously. So as you can see, like this photo here, you can see my cursor is in the fitness fort up in Barrisburg, and these are seniors that do a dance exercise program. This is one of our painting courses, and of course, this is one of our drop-in groups that folks that are playing a game at the senior center. So we've been able to do that. We are going to have the letter, so the letter is complete. We'll have that dropped into the document shortly. Table of contents has not changed. So we did do a little bit of updating to the explanation of the age friendly, and so if you were able to read that, we kind of softened it up a little bit. It was a little bit of a, sort of almost a Wikipedia sort of explanation of San Mateo, so we gave a few more specifics and sort of softened the document, talked about some of the things that we hope to do that are a little bit more specific. So that was good. And then again, we listed out the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight domains. We added some pictures to those. We're going to actually be adding, changing a couple of these out, but we're trying to make it a little bit more personal and make sure that, you know, all of our pictures show the diversity of the people of San Mateo, it's really important to us, so. This was another one that we actually changed the description a little bit regarding community. It does talk about, you know, in general, where the city of San Mateo is in the Bay Area, a little bit about the history, and then about sort of the structure of this San Mateo city government. And the reason we need to do that is obviously people look at these documents, as we did, from all over the country. And so we wanted to make sure that we kind of explain how the city of San Mateo was structured. Okay, so then these charts. These five charts, we actually are going to be changing the colors again to conform more with our color palette. But what we hoped to do was to make it a little bit more self-guided so that you didn't need big explanations to understand the charts. And I know Commissioner Wang and Commissioner Lee have given a lot of input on this as well. So I'm not going to go through, you know, the specifics of the chart, but you can kind of see where we've made it a little clearer how the slices are broken up. We've defined the colors a little bit. Obviously, these colors are going to change, but the contrast will stay the same so that you can see how the city residents are actually broken up by ethnicity and race. Okay, key projects, so we stayed with our community assets, the key project being prioritizing safe walking routes. And I know that Vince is in the meeting, and again, you know, every time that this comes up, I just want to give my thank you to Wes and to primarily Vince for all the work that he did, as well as the Age Friendly Task Force. The photo that we're using are sort of the four sort of hubs of where seniors primarily travel, travel the most by foot, is the photo that we used for that. Next one is the key program, Hip Housing Program, so Sandy Council. And you all remember when Sandy came in and did her presentation for us, and it was terrific, and Sandy has since retired. So we were able to celebrate her, I just wanted to let you guys know that. But we were able to use Hip Housing here in San Mateo as a key program. Again, it's just because it's a key program doesn't mean that we don't highlight all of the other things that we're doing, but that was a key one. Okay, intergenerational programming. We actually were able to put some additional money into our budget to fund some of this stuff, which is terrific. So as you can see, this is a photo where we had a lot of our younger folks, in addition to our seniors, at our senior center. And we're going to have a focus on some senior theater programs that are with teens, as well as a lot of the special events where we do programs and lunches with our seniors and our early childhood development children, as well as our PAL folks. So that'll be the key project, is the intergenerational community building, which is actually one of our projects that we identified and called out in our application to AARP. Age Friendly Business Certification, so I know that, again, Vince has been working on this one as well. That will be our key project. And again, we're, there was a couple different ways that we were looking at doing this. I think it would be a little bit of a difficult program to maybe just do in-house on our own, and there are agencies and organizations that are out there already that have sort of canned programs for age-friendly business certification. And I know Vince has been doing some work around that, so we're going to flush that out more shortly. But that was a key project for respecting social inclusion. And again, just regarding the Age Friendly Business Certification, the idea is that businesses here in the city of San Mateo, that there would be some incentive so that they could be certified and promoted as an age-friendly business if they did certain things to make a senior feel more comfortable, more accessible in their business. The next one, key project, was Burrell Park Development Project. We're hoping to have that project done by end of May, early June. And if you haven't had a chance, if you pass by over Shaffer Street, Burrell Park is underway, and it's going to be a terrific park, not only for the little kids, because it's got two playgrounds, but it also has a lot of seating and pathways throughout the project. It'll be a great place for our senior population to be able to access and sit and have lunch and enjoy a day. So we still have all the mature trees that are out there. There's lots of shade, and it's a beautiful park. So we want to make sure that every time that we're building buildings or parks or things that we're looking at, at our senior population, and how it can benefit them. Okay, next one, we had selected Health and Community Services. We think the library's home delivery service is a really, really great program. A lot of cities developed this program during COVID, and I think it's terrific. You know, a senior can be homebound, they can receive books and have them delivered directly to them, and our library provides that service, which is terrific, so we want to highlight that. And then the Senior Citizens Commission. And what I wanted to tell you is, I will get into how we're going to, we're going to change this picture out, and we will be inserting a photo, hopefully, of all of our new, our new commissioners here, and be able to insert that. And I'll talk a little bit during staff reports on how we might be able to obtain that picture. And again, I think for the city of San Mateo, we are very fortunate that we have a Senior Citizens Commission that is appointed by our city council. It's a very rare thing to actually have a body that the city can report to on a regular basis like this. So we're very fortunate and wanted to highlight that as a work and civic engagement. Communication and information. So we're probably going to clean this up a little bit, Monica, with the picture that we used, but we, instead of, you remember the old picture was of the New York Times, what we wanted to show was the Age Friendly News articles, and we wanted to highlight that, because we've already had ten terrific sort of, you know, promotions of things that are going on, not only here, you know, with the city of San Mateo and our programs, but our partners, nonprofits, and other folks. And Commissioner Lee has done a terrific job of getting those things out and getting them to us for review, and then working with Samantha Weigle in the city manager's office, and whether it be the Daily Journal, whoever it might be, and being able to get out our Age Friendly News article. So, you know, we can work on this photo, but the idea was to get something in here that shows what that project was actually doing and the work that's actually happening. So we're really excited about that. And again, I think, I think we've gotten some traction because we've had a lot of people tell us that, you know, they became aware of things via those news articles, so that's really good. Okay, so then our action items. So we worked with the San Mateo Police Department to develop and present a series of community trainings on avoiding scams, fraud, and financial abuse targeting older adults. And that, we went over that with San Mateo PD when we had our conversations with them, with the Age Friendly Task Force as well. So that was one of the action items that we want to get to. Continue to collaborate with Public Works to track progress on sidewalk improvements, and identify priority areas, and find next steps to improve pedestrian safety. So that one speaks from safe walking routes. We continue to monitor that and see how that's going. Continue publishing monthly Age Friendly News articles. And again, we just covered that one, and we've done, Commissioner Lee has done a really, really good job of putting those together with other folks in code as well. Develop a series of intergenerational programs. I know that our staff is working hard on developing those. They've been meeting regularly to figure out, you know, what programs they actually can offer, and the timeline in which they can actually offer them. Number five is develop or implement an existing Age Friendly Business Certification. So again, this was one of our projects that we just talked about. And then number six was pursue community partnerships and funding opportunities to support Age Friendly San Mateo activities. And so that one's a super important one. Obviously, when we got into the Age Friendly Initiative, it didn't come with additional funding. So for us to be able to, you know, to fund a lot of these projects or ideas that we might have to make them actually come to fruition is to find partnerships and funding to make those happen at work. We're not trying to do things in a silo, or this would exist in resources that we stay active in pursuing other ways of funding these things. So we can add additional steps as we go along. It's supposed to be, you know, a living document as we move forward. Now, the plan will be, and I'll get to it in one second, Commissioner Foreman, the plan will be that we want the other departments that participated in the interviews to do some review of this document, so that if there are things that they would like to add, that they have an opportunity to do that. As I said, we also wanted to make sure that, you know, we're adding appropriate photos so that we're representative of our city and not just using stock photos. I think some of the content will also be beefed up a little bit, and we've had some conversations with some of the Age Friendly Task Force members around that as well. Commissioner Foreman?
Well, I think it's a great document, and I am so happy that we're going to have that because I think it really does, I think, work to increase the awareness of all of our senior programs that the city has. The only comment I had was under the transportation section. There were four, I believe, assets that we currently have that support that. My only thought there, and again, this is just from working with a lot of seniors, is that I'm not sure the Bicycle Master Plan is really spot-on for where the seniors need transportation assets. So I just, my suggestion is, is there another community asset that we might replace that instead of the Bicycle Master Plan? And I'm not sure what that would be. I think the other three, again, are spot-on in terms of helpful to seniors. I'm just questioning the bicycle. I'm just questioning the bicycle.
Okay, well, we'll definitely discuss that. Anyone else have any questions on, on anything with the plan?
Yeah. I actually, I, I think there are quite a few older adults on bicycles out there. So I'm not, I'm not, you know, I hear your concern, but when you look around, it's quite a few mature people that are using their bikes to get around. So maybe that's, that's a thing that is helpful. And yeah, I mean, I think my main comment on this is that I think we will want to be a little more fully invested in additional programs. I'm hoping that we can add a few steps as we get this to the final stage to, to be more specific on some more efforts that we plan to undertake as we, you know, interact with the city departments and get some more commitments, I hope. So that, that's my main. I had sent in some, some changes and comments and I think we'll work through that, you know, you don't have to do that here.
Thank you, Commissioner Lee. And, and again, just a reminder, we got a little ahead of the game because of the way that the county brought this to the cities here in San Mateo County was that we had developed all of our projects prior and we actually got started working on them. And I think in a, in a lot of other places, they developed this age-friendly action plan and then they started to work on the projects from there. And so for us, you know, it probably would be important to be able to add things as we kind of go along and identify those things as Commissioner Lee said. Because we are so far along, we've already, you know, moved through a couple of the projects already.
Chair Wang has her hand raised.
Thank you. My comment, the one I see at the moment is with the community assets that are listed, four of them under each of the eight domains. And, and for example, using bicycle, the bicycle plan under transportation, although I do agree with Commissioner Lee that seniors do ride bikes and the bicycle plan is supposed to make it safer, I believe is one of the goals of the bicycle plan. But is it necessary to have four community assets under each domain? I mean, it seems like we're reaching to trying to find a fourth one maybe in, in more than just this one. Just to fill in the fourth spot, but I don't think it's necessary to have four. Just so it looks ready.
Yeah, Commissioner Wang, I don't, I don't think it's necessary. I do think that there is some validity to, you know, inserting bicycles in the master plan. You know, because there are, there are the seniors that that use those routes as well. You know, we have the walking already and then we have the vehicle sort of routes that are you know, vehicle programs, transportation programs that are added as well. There, there's nothing that says that we have to have four. So, you know, we can, we can have further conversations about that.
Okay, well, I, I don't have a problem with the bicycle ones per se like Ms. Foreman does, but it's possible that looking at these, some of the other ones may be a stretch is what I'm saying in another, in another domain.
Okay. Are there any other questions? All right, thank you. Commissioner Wang, I think you're muted as well, so you're aware.
Okay, we will then, thank you all. We look forward to the next draft of the action plan. It's progressing very nicely. So the next item-
Commissioner Wang, you might want to open it up for public comment at this time in case there's any members of the public who wish to comment on it.
Thank you very much. Are there any public, do we have any hands raised from the public?
No hands, no hands raised, Commissioner Wang.
Okay. So we won't have any comments from the public at this time on that topic. The next topic will be the seniors recreation program update. And I'm not sure who's speaking on that.
So we have Commissioner Wang, we have Carolyn Chevel, who is our senior center supervisor, and Amber Chong, who's our senior center coordinator. And then I will also be adding in a little bit of detail. One thing I did want to make you aware of, I will be at the very end sort of talking briefly about requests that come from individual commissioners and how we'll actually sort of deal with those moving forward. We hope to, in our presentation here, hope to answer some of the questions that were asked regarding programming. So if we don't, we can obviously answer those, but in general, we'll be following up with the individual commissioners if questions are asked from an individual. Okay, so no further ado, Carolyn, Amber, I will stop sharing. There you go.
All right, Amber, would you like to go first?
Sure. Hi, everybody. So just a quick update on some of our programs here at the senior center. Some highlighted ones obviously continue to be our tech programs. We continue to have classes, one-on-one tutoring as well as very direct type of programs such as iPhone, iPad type of classes as well. And the good part is that these are both hybrids. So everything is of either A available in person or online, or it's a hybrid. So it can do both, which has been really great. We've been asking for the, I'd probably say over the past month, several of our classes, we've been asking them, how is your, what is your feeling about coming back? So there's, it was definitely a mixed review. We're definitely still getting the would rather stay online. It's more as accessible right now. So hopefully we'll be in person soon with some of those. Also, a big one is our California Mahjong. Mahjong, as we know, has just continued to grow over the past couple of years when we were pre-COVID. We had started off with one Mahjong class and by the end of it, you know, by the time COVID hit, we had, I believe, four Mahjong classes and they were all filled with the waitlist. So there's no surprise that California Mahjong is doing the same thing. It is filled with a waitlist. We're currently looking for another instructor to either A divvy out the two groups, more of an intermediate and then a beginner class. We're still kind of working on that and seeing who would be able to run that class as California Mahjong was created by the actual instructor that's here. So we're continuing to work with that one. And then some of our up and coming programs, just programs that are, you know, returning and are growing. So we have our movie days. It used to be Thursday at the movies and now it is Friday at the movies. We moved them, that program from Thursday to Friday, hoping that some of our lunch participants would possibly stay and eat. And it would give them another reason just to stay at the center a little bit longer. So our movies now are on Fridays at one o'clock. We have definitely seen an increase with that. It's great. And we are going to be starting a new element to our movie days, which is I put in an advertisement out there looking for a volunteer for movie discussion. And it just so happens that we have somebody that was in the movie industry down in LA who has a passion for movies and will be pending his, you know, live scan and everything, but looks like he will be our movie. Sorry, lost my train of thought for a second. Our movie discussion lead. So what he's going to do is he's going to actually be asking the participants that watch the movie questions after the meeting. So to try to get them again, more engaged. So just adding that a different element to just watching a movie. So we're very, very excited about that one. And he's also going to be helping me or us, the team, select movies, which is also extremely helpful. The second program would be Bingo. So as you know, we definitely Bingo came back and it's been a slow return. But we are back and every Wednesday we have four dedicated Bingo volunteers. We have two callers. And then we have Dee who has returned after COVID, very excited to see her, her energy and just her, her passion and dedication to being here is awesome. So she is 90 years old and she is back and she is rocking it. So we're just so happy just to have those volunteers back and we're able to bring that program back. Like I said, it's every Wednesday right now. And we just, I just see it continuing to grow as, as time goes on. I also wanted to let you guys know about volunteers. Right now, we tech, we have four tech volunteers, dedicated volunteers, four Bingo volunteers and two front desk volunteers. And then we also, as you're aware, we also still partner with NCL, our National Charities League, and YMSL for volunteers that do different gift, gift bags and treats and stuff for seniors for special holidays or special events, makes yard signs, cards and so forth that gets passed out during our lunch program. So, but volunteers definitely getting a lot coming in right now. We have over 25 volunteers still in SASH, over 30 participants still in SASH. Some of them due to have two clients assigned. That's why it's a little different. But we have over 30 participants still partaking in this particular service as well as we continue to get more even as time kind of goes on. So we actually have two to, two to three people on the waitlist currently. And I, we just held interviews, I just held interviews. It's called actually an orient, volunteer orientation. I held three over the past two weeks. That's how many volunteers interested volunteers we have, both for front desk, SASH and tech. So we're excited. We're getting geared up and ready to go.
Oh, you're muted, Carolyn.
Yeah, do you guys have any questions? Sorry, I should have asked that.
I just have one question. I think it's amazing. We have such a wonderful suite of programs. I know one that was popular was the mature driving offered through the AARP volunteer. Are there any plans to bring that back?
So currently, I, I talk to them every quarter. So they are still on my contract, contact list. They currently are not offering in-person programs. So as of right now, we just, I just check in with them periodically and hoping that that does come back because people do need it. Right now, when they call, we're just directing them to AARP website.
So does the AARP offer any online classes then?
I don't believe they do.
Okay. Well, that's good. That's good. You're monitoring it because as I said, I know that was a popular program pre-COVID.
It was.
Chair Wang, has her hand raised?
Hi, thank you. I had a question about, there was an, I, as you were thumbing through there, a nutrition program. I like to eat and I'm always looking for new recipes. What, what is that all about?
So that is a partnership that we have with, I'm going to forget the name, but I'm going to grab it. Leah's pantry. And they talk about the importance of making sure that you, you have the variations in your food and the types of proportions and what you can substitute, as well as they do do rest, they do recipes every, every set. They have four sessions for classes. And at the end of each class, they get a snack and they get to make it and they get some recipes to take home as well. And the good part is they also actually teach you how to read the labeling to let you know what you should be looking for at a grocery store. Expiration dates, what, what do they really mean? Compost, they actually will tell you what can be composted, what could be reused, like how else you can use a banana peel. You would be surprised. So there's a wide variety of stuff that they do in there.
Thank you. Check that out. Thank you.
It's a fun class. I've joined in a couple of times.
Commissioner Foreman has her, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was just wondering, I saw that Liz still had her hand up.
I just had another question. I've been doing some polling of people and of course they love that we get the spring happenings and the quarterly updates. One question is, there's something in the, in the table of contents called Bay Tree Bistro. But then we seem to also call the program the Get Around Program. And so they were wondering what is the difference between those two program, meal programs?
It's actually, it, that's two different programs. So unless it's, the numbers are incorrect. No, so Get Around is the transportation program. And then Bay Tree Bistro is our lunch program. So I know we call it Grab and Go right now, but it's still Bay Tree Bistro is the, is the main name.
I see. So the name of the program is Bay Tree Bistro. That's not a separate lunch program from Grab and Go. They're the same thing.
It's the same thing. And on page seven, on the title, on the top of it, it has Bay Tree Bistro, as well as our logo that we use is still Bay Tree Bistro.
Okay, so that's our own city logo.
That's, that's that particular program's logo, yes.
Are there any plans to use one or the other names permanently?
Well, Bay Tree Bistro is the permanent name. It's just get, grab and go right now because of the fact that it's a grab and go or grab and stay and eat. It's a hybrid right now.
Okay.
Mary has her hand up.
Commissioner Foreman, just so you know that that's more of an operational decision. So we will be at some point going back to our in-house hot lunch program. We'll move away from the grabbing. Okay, sorry. Commissioner Webb?
I'm curious as to what thought is coming about. All of this requires transportation in one way or another, plus our own transportation program with gasoline going up so much. What are we taking into consideration for these items? I mean, I saw 669 on a pump marquee yesterday and I'm going, whoa, you know.
So Commissioner Webb, I think for us, you know, over the next couple of months, you know, time is really going to tell what's going to happen at the pump and, and what will happen with supply chains and prices and all of those things. I think for us now, you know, we're sort of in a holding pattern and, and, you know, keeping things the way they are until until we can't. And so, you know, the, the, as you guys know, there's so much going on across the globe that, that is affecting us now here at home that, you know, we're kind of in that wait and see. Currently, you know, we're not having, Sierra Cab hasn't contacted us to to say, hey, we can't fulfill the contract because of gas prices or things like that. So you know, we'll just kind of wait and see.
Thank you.
And most of our programs are offered still either A, most of them are offered virtually as well. So even some of the classes that are held in person, we still make sure that we're trying to offer them online as well.
Okay, any, any additional questions? Carolyn, did you have anything else you wanted to add? I have a couple of items.
Yes, Lily was going to talk about the Get Around Program and then I was going to talk more about the Lunch Program.
Okay, true.
Hi, everyone. So yes, our Get Around Program is still in action and it's, it's continued to grow. To date, we have 894 members or participants, rather. That's 25 more than, than I reported during the January meeting when we had 869. So that's a growth So that's a growth of 25 participants in two months. And it's still a fantastic program. We, you know, we get calls about it all the time. You know, folks using it to go to doctor's appointments, to go grocery shopping. We even have had some participants, specifically last week, we had a gentleman who called us and he's been a member since 2018. He has not used the program, but he just was calling because, because he wanted to make sure it was still active just in case. So it's just really great that our seniors have access to this program, you know, because who knows what his circumstances or what other circumstances are for people and, and they may not be able to drive or, or whatnot. And so it's really exciting to, to see the program continue to grow.
And I'd like to just add one additional thing. I know at our last meeting, there was some, some comments, I agree, Commissioner Webb, you as well. I'd asked you, what about potentially the possibility to sort of expand the program, to, to join it with other existing programs that might be out there so that we can get our seniors to, to move, you know, further out from the city of Sammentale. We did look into it logistically. It, it would be very, very difficult because of the way that billing works to, to be able to do that. Not shutting the door on it, but just letting you all know that, that we did look into it and, and, you know, first glance, it would be very, very difficult to, to join some of these programs together. But more to come. Again, it doesn't mean we're shutting the door on it entirely. It just means in our first conversations and our first look at it.
Yeah, thank you for looking into that. That's good to hear. I, I know it's not going to be easy, but it's, I think it's worth the effort to, to, to keep looking a little bit more if we can. Thanks.
There has been a lot of talk on the meal, the lunch program, but we just wanted to bring up a few numbers for you. This week, March marks the one, the 104th week that we have been serving seniors during COVID and we're very excited about it. And on, actually on the 17th is our, our very first day when we did it two years ago, we will be serving our 16,000th meal for seniors. So we're very excited to have been continually open, not closed one day during COVID. So we're, we're, we're very fortunate that our caterer continued and that we have had great volunteers helping out the, our CERT program helped with the, with the delivery. Our lead teachers and people were helping with the, the grab and goes. And now we are having our, few of our volunteers are coming back now to help us out. So we're very excited. And this week being St. Patrick's Day, as Amber mentioned, we have the Young Men's Service League, M, 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 YMSL and the National Charities League, which is high school girls and their parents. And then Young Men's Service League is high school boys and their parents are helping to give out, are helping us to donate bags of treats and signs and flower arrangements for the tables for those that do stay. So the volunteers are back in full swing, helping out with our lunch program. So we're very excited that it continues and look for their, further to doing good things with that.
Thank you again, Carolyn, for all of your work in making that happen. It's incredible, 16,000 lunches in, in 104 weeks. And, and all you've done during, you know, some of the most extreme circumstances. It's pretty incredible. So just want to say thank you to you. And then regarding the waitlist, so we did take a look at, at what that waitlist looks like. And I just wanted to let, let you know that roughly 97 to 98% of the time, we are able to take care of Sammentale's residents. That they, they are not, they don't sit on the waitlist and not get served. And so we looked at, you know, is there a need for the waitlist? Is there a need to expand the number of lunches? And primarily there are, I think it's, Carolyn, correct me, is it fish? When we serve fish, there tends to be a longer waitlist. But, but other than that, the waitlist is, is usually pretty manageable and we're able to clear it with, with regular, you know, regularity. So is that pretty accurate, Carolyn?
That's very accurate, yes. With, and, and if you, for all the people that come in every norm, that come in every day, we give them out the, the sheet for the next month. And if you are able to get it back in, all of the residents usually get exactly what they have requested. It might be the non-residents who are hearing about our program and want to come into, who are, are usually placed on the waitlist, so.
Okay. All right, any additional questions? Well, I thank the staff very much for all your work that you're doing during this time. I do want to add one additional thing that we are looking to open the center for regular drop-in, April 4th. That is our target date. Now, if things, you know, continue to stay where they are and, and we're not to get worse, that currently, we, you know, we've got the center is, there's lots of life in the center, but people that are coming there are coming because they're registered for a program. And there are a lot of other folks that want to get back into the center or at least now are, are starting to come to us talking about, hey, I'd like to just come back for, for non-directed recreation and, and part of the drop-in and be able to play cards or games or just sit and relax and talk with people. And so we've done a lot of talking with neighboring cities and, and other senior centers throughout the Bay Area and Carolyn and Amber have been diligent about that to be able to see what their plans are as well. And so we feel comfortable with, you know, the April 4th starting to get back to the next stage of the, of normal, which is, which is really exciting for us. I just wanted to give you that one as well.
Agreed.
And we will still be having the grab and go with the lunches. We, we will not be bringing the lunches back in quite just yet, but we'll still be working on that soon.
Okay. All right, that's it for programming, Commissioner Wang.
Thank you. That was exciting. It seems like lots is happening and thank you, Amber and Carolyn, for all your dedicated work and of course Bob also. So next up is reports and announcements. Shall I start with the commissioners? Or do commissioners have announcements or reports or comments at this time?
Do.
Liz, go ahead.
This question's for Bob. It was kind of old business, but I was just curious where we are on the status of filling our open commissioner position.
Funny that you asked.
So Commissioner Foreman, so I'll answer that quickly. So we actually have a little bit of a snafu. We thought we were going to be able to fill it. It turns out we are not. So we are going to go back to the drawing board and council will be running another short process. We'll do another recruitment and try to find another group of folks who would love to be part of the senior commission. And then, and then we'll make a selection down the road. But as of now, the seat is still, the fifth seat seat is still vacant. And that actually was going to be one of my, one of my staff reports.
So. Speaking of commissioners, the Commission on Aging has two openings that need to be filled. And there's a process you can still apply if you're interested. I just thought I'd mention it here because it might be of interest of some of you. This is for the County Commission on Aging.
And, and thank you, Commissioner Lee. I encourage anyone that might be interested in that. I, I attended fairly regularly, I attended it today. And it's a really good group of people and it actually gets a lot of service providers that attend those meetings as well. So if you have the bandwidth, it's definitely something to go for.
Or if you know someone who might be.
Or if you know.
Yeah.
I would like to make a comment. Since we had a couple of amendments to the minutes, or did I, I don't remember if I said this already, or maybe this was prior to the meeting. So I'll make it public. If I hadn't, is there a way to get the minutes earlier than we do, which is like the week or a couple of days before a meeting? Is there a way to get the minutes a couple of days or a week after a meeting? So everything's fresh in our minds.
So Chair Wang, we checked with the clerk's office and we have to send out the minutes with the packet. We could try to send the packet out a day earlier, like on the Thursday, which doesn't give you a lot more time, but it is, it's something. But it needs to go out with the packet. And then obviously any changes that, you know, any amendments to those minutes need to be done in the public forum during the meeting. So, yeah, we did check. It has to go out with the same packet. It can't just go out at a different time.
Is it not possible for the? I'm sorry.
What, what did it say? I didn't hear you.
Yeah, I, I was wondering if a draft of the minutes can be sent to commissioners.
A draft, yes, a draft, a draft.
I can ask that question and we will get back to you.
Thank you.
Okay. Let me write this down, minutes. Agenda, okay. Any more comments or announcements? Otherwise, I'm going to close the meeting.
Chair Wang, I, I have a couple from the staff side. So I just, I wanted to, to let commissioners know so that if during the, during the, any of these commission meetings, you have individual questions where you would like some data or things like that. I have two things. One is to please just be mindful of how much time, staff time, it actually would require for your request. I mean, if it's something easy to pull up, not that big a deal. But if, if we're asking for, you know, big reports or deep detail that takes a lot of staff time, it, it's going to take a period of time to be able to answer. And then the second part of that is if it's coming from an individual commission as opposed to maybe all of the commissioners, we'll reach out during, you know, we're not going to wait too much to get back to you. We'll try to get an answer and we'll reach out to you directly since that specific commissioner was the one who, who had, you know, some, some questions about that area. So we'll make it a little bit more, more intimate that way. You know, obviously we want to, we want to answer all of the questions from the commission in the public forum. But if there are questions that come up that are specific to a commissioner, we'll, we'll try to do it that way. And then my second, my second one, and this is some good news and I think that all of you are going to enjoy this. Our city council will be returning to City Hall and holding hybrid city council meetings in the month of, beginning in the month of April, which means that our next meeting in May will be an in-person meeting at City Hall in Conference Room C, where we actually can hold a hybrid meeting. Now, Liliana and some of the other folks who, you know, facilitate the commission and the council will be doing some training prior to that to help us with the hybrid format. But the good news is that the four of you would be able to just come to City Hall and we could have an in-person commission meeting. And, and Liliana and staff would basically take care of the Zoom portion or the hybrid portion of the meeting. Here at City Hall, we have the infrastructure to be able to, to support a hybrid meeting. So there's wireless mics and, and the, the screens and, and the things that are necessary in order to, to be able to do that. So that is our intention. Now, if for some reason, one of you cannot attend, you can still do it via, via Zoom. You can still attend via Zoom, but we have to have at least three commissioners in person in order to, to hold the meeting. Now, there, there's, there are some specifics around Brown Act and some of the other things that still need to be ironed out because again, this is, you know, this is all new frontier stuff that we're, we're trying to put on. But by and large, if the four of you are willing to, you know, come to City Hall for our next meeting, we can hold an in-person meeting. So I'd be, I'd be sort of interested to, to hear, you know, some feedback from you and how you feel about that. You know, do it now, you can do it individually or you can let me know now. That's it for me.
Okay, that sounds good. Oh, am I, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. That sounds very nice. And as we get closer, hopefully it, we won't, whatever, my backpedal is what I was going to say. I think that's it for today's meeting unless anybody else has anything to report. Okay, then. I officially close the meeting. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks. Bye-bye.
Bye.